Starters, Chairman of the Planning Commission who sit in methodical and in order to plug the leaders.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Oh my god, I've got this all goofed up here.
Last meeting screws it all up.
Well, no, it's one of those, I'm looking at my roll call sheet here. Schneider?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Carter?
Yep, I'm here.
Weaver?
Here.
Garber?
Here.
Mark Warren?
Here.
Henley? Absent. Ian Dunsmore is absent. I still have Larry here on the top of my list.
No.
Are you still standing there?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to excuse the absence.
Have a motion?
A second.
Have motion with support to excuse the absence is all in the paper?
Aye, aye.
Close? Everybody have a copy of the agenda? Any amendments to the agenda?
Can I make amendment or not? Or can... I know, you got citizens.
I was gonna say, we'll throw you in under citizens comments, how's that?
Okay, but it says non-agenda, oh, I tend to add, yeah, I'll do it there, okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
I have a motion in support to adopt the agenda as planned, all is there?
Aye.
Close? Minutes from October 14, planning commission meeting. Any additions or corrections to minutes? Now, any motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the October 14, 2015 meeting as presented.
Support?
Have motion with support to accept the minutes from October 14, 2015, all is there?
Aye.
Close? Carried. Comments from citizens? Do they have any citizens out there?
Me.
Okay, then, do you have any comments?
I've read the changes that we agreed to last time and that Adam Young presented. And I also went back to the old code book. And on the... There's principal uses permitted and there's principal uses permitted subject to special conditions. Now, under the old code book, there's only one area, and that's under one family residential districts, where the special conditions, that goes to the planning commission to review. In other words, if it's once it's permitted, then it's just permitted and that's it. But, and so, and when you review the other items in there, there is permitted uses and special uses. But now, under the new zoning proposal that we just approved, if you go to page three, I think it is, I don't figure whether or not, I would be doing it.
From the last time?
Yes, it's... Yeah, it's the one that we sent through. If you go to page three. The principal uses permitted subject to the special conditions, the following uses shall be permitted by the planning commission after only a public hearing in accordance with section 150.03. 150.03, it just shows you what the regulations are currently in. But what I'm questioning here, we've never had the special uses like that. They have to go to the planning commission before, or to the public hearing, they had to go to the planning commission. Now, if you want that, that's fine. But you... It will create, could create a problem because you might get a lot of feedback from the public and maybe you want that. But it's not in the original code. It's only in the one that we adopt or that we are going to have the public hearing on. So, my question to you then is, you still want it in there? Or you still would like to go how it was in the old code?
Which pages, let's again, I'm not...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, that's right, you just came in.
Sorry.
I'm discussing the new regulations that we set up for the zone. Okay, and if you go to page three.
Okay.
All right, and then, when you go to the old code book, and I did state, there's two. What we do have is we have principal uses permitted, and then we have principal uses permitted subject to special conditions. Under the old code book, when the special uses, it went to the planning commission. If it was permitted, it didn't have to. Now, on the new regulations that were set in place, you go to the planning commission when it's special uses. But also, we added, we have to add a public hearing. So, my question is, you really want that in there?
Do we have a public hearing for it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I don't see where we would need it.
I don't, no.
Now, that was put in there by...
Yeah, well...
Where did that come from?
Well, when Adam Young was here, he added that. And I think it was, I think it was through the conversation, it was kind of going back and forth. But what I'm saying is, if you got permitted and special uses, that means states that it can go in there. So, if you... But it should maybe come to the planning commission, that's what it states. But we've also added a back of a public hearing.
Is that standard?
My question, you really want that in there?
Is that standard, like for other municipalities and things like that?
I don't know, I could ask, I could call Adam Young and ask, but I don't... We never had it before, so I don't know whether you want to... Because you are subject to a lot more, well, potential problems and maybe, maybe it's up to the public to put there. But I don't know if you want that in there.
The second sentence kind of revicts the first one.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
It says you can do it, and then it says, and then it puts us on the table.
So, that's the primary reason I'm here tonight, because I want to bring that up to you. And if you want, if it should be taken out, or if you want me to call Adam Young, and I don't think there's any problem taking it out, but if you want me to just verify it, then I can check with Bob and I hear him or someone and scratch it out before you have a public hearing. But it's up to you. I don't vote on it because I'm not up there now, but I'm just... When I read this over, I thought I better bring it to your attention.
So, that clause will still be subject to section 150.035, we took that out of there?
Yeah, you're just, where it says permitted by the planning commission, and right after that, you just take it out.
So, we struck those...
Just struck out after holding a public hearing.
It's page two?
You could leave the subject, the conditions here in place to view. But just take out that one little section. But I'm leaving it up to you though, because I don't have a role.
Well, let's look at it this way. If you looked at a residential area, and all of a sudden you've got this commercial overlay being brought in, whatever it might be, you may want, you may want to have a public hearing about it, I mean, is it that? It's not the end of the world if we have a public hearing.
It's not the end of the world, but it could subject you to a lot of, a lot of problems. Yeah, because you get somebody like, my buddy across, lives across from me.
Whoever, yeah.
Yeah, you know, and that, where he was completely irrational. And when you're having special uses anyway there, but you're just controlling by the planning commission, I understand that. Because they want some input in something like that. But I... Perfectly, I prefer it wasn't in there, but I'm just...
The public would still have access through the planning commission to voice their concern or stuff.
Oh, yeah, they can come to the planning commission anytime, but when you have to hold a public hearing.
Specific for that cause.
So, I'm just bringing this up here.
It's not like we'd be limiting any access to...
No, you're not, because they can, they...
To voice an opinion.
They can come here anytime, Charlie's here, anybody can come here.
It just wouldn't be a special cause just for...
Or me, at this point.
Well, nobody would be aware of it, so.
Well, I...
As opposed to posting it as a public hearing, I mean, that's your...
Who reads that, who reads that public hearing crap in the voice? Does anybody really look at it? You know, if people are gonna know, if people are...
You couldn't find it when you're supposed to find it, could you? That's why it's delayed the next week, the next month.
You know, with the sheets.
Well, I'm just bringing it out, I, if I'm sitting up there, I'd probably say, vote not to have it, but, you know, that's not the...
I think that's my opinion as well.
So, we want to strike that section 150.035 is...
Yeah, I think that's such an obvious having a...
Yeah, you don't need that.
You don't need that, yeah, exactly, so you don't need that either, you actually don't need the whole thing because you have one.
Just period after planning commission.
Yeah, subject to condition here unimposed, you want that in there.
Two. This is in the new package?
Shall be permitted.
You strike it out after holding a public hearing?
Pardon?
Is that what she said, you're gonna strike that out?
Yeah, you want, where it says commission, right there, put a period. After holding public hearing with sex, a hearing in accordance with section, take that out. But subject to the condition here unimposed, that's not a problem there.
You're right, you're right. What about where it says, shall?
Be permitted? That means we have to let them do it?
Well...
Doesn't it come through to like review it?
Well, you're allowing it in, because when you look at, when you look at it, principal uses permitted, principal uses permitted subject to special conditions. So, you're allowing it in there. And all the other imposing others is where you have special conditions, you gotta place on putting it in there.
We can tailor it or make recommendations.
Is the word permitted what's causing, what about shall be considered?
Shall, that's hard to say.
Considered as opposed to permitted?
Should it say maybe considered?
Maybe, that was my thought, maybe permitted.
Because if you say shall, that means it's gonna be...
I say shall be considered. Shall be considered. Just change permitted, so that it's not misunderstood, consider.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
What's the difference?
Well...
Consider is to think about it one way or the other.
Right.
That means we'll think about it. If it says shall be permitted, that's a given.
So, two special conditions, let's think about it.
There's not really a wrong answer.
It might be, I'd work.
Does the, does the answer comes from planning, is it a recommending body to city council?
Yes, they recommend a council. They don't have the final decision, but they do all the, they do all of, everything ahead of time. It goes to council, but it's their recommendation to council to either do it or not to do it. You know, and it's up to council, council can override it, but it's up to council.
I'll share my experience, as long as the special land use or it is following a structured path. It does create an extra layer of insulation so that if somebody were to challenge the decision of the city council and/or the planning commission, when you go in front of a judge and the judge is looking at, did they do everything they were supposed to do? It's just enough, an extra layer, as long as you follow that path and you can say, yes, we did everything that was in our ordinance, everything that was... And we asked these questions, we did a public hearing at the planning commission meeting, so that you don't have a judge saying, well, we don't know that the planning commission was informed. Because they didn't have a public hearing when they made a decision, and this is a special land use outside of the typical use. So, by having the special land use and having the posting, and all of the BS that goes along with that, you create that insulation that you've done everything you're supposed to. Because often, it's the challenges that you have at the court side of it, where somebody's trying to impose their will and said, the planning commission, they weren't really aware of what they were doing. And the public, they were all in favor of it, they wanted it, but they didn't have a special land use, so nobody was notified. And other people would have come and they would have supported it. I can see, I could play it both ways.
Either way, we put the wording in there, semantics is, shall, maybe permitted, shall be considered, it says the same thing.
More oversight is better than less when it gets to court.
What we're looking at is whether or not we want to have a public hearing.
That's the only thing you're looking at.
And I think that if you have a public hearing, and I mean, as far as the, what's involved in it, it's one of those, making sure that it gets posted and timely made. And I think that we're covering our butts a little bit better if we do have the public hearing. And all the time I've here, you know, I've been here, I don't know how many public hearings we've had, it's less than 20. In the 13 years I've been doing this, and it's generally not a big deal. I mean, we do get a little bit of input, but generally, even if we don't have a public hearing, if there's a big issue on the table about something that's going on, it's already made the papers, and people show up for the meeting. But I think if we cover ourselves by having a public hearing, then we just stay in check and we stay, per se, more legally blanketed by having the hearing. Well, if we were to have a real sensitive issue, could we just opt to have a public hearing? If we thought that that was in our best interest without adding that actually is?
In the zone, wouldn't it?
Well, I think if something that was sensitive enough, I think if it was in front of the planning commission, that we could call for a public hearing.
That's what I'm saying.
As a body, we say, okay, well, we'd like the public's input. Then we could call for a public hearing, even though it's not required, then we could do that, correct?
I assume you could, I...
We could do that anytime, yeah.
I'm not necessarily wanting to know, but...
Any type of radiation, you could do that.
Maybe look pending a public hearing.
Well, I don't know. You do what you want, I'm just, when I read this...
Don't give us an option.
It was never, I should say, it was never in the original code book. And it's been added in this, because we still had the, we still had the primary uses and we had the special uses.
The way it's written now, you can't have a public hearing.
And if you go back and look at the old code book, it's not, it was never a public hearing on it, so.
Then, could I ask you, Larry, if you could talk to somebody from Way Trim and find out if their recommendation is strong in this direction?
I can call Adam Young tomorrow.
Okay, that would be appreciated.
And then, get his recommendation and I'll inform Bob and you. But it just, whatever we do, we want it down to timing of the public hearing, okay?
Yeah.
All right, that's how I read that over both, and I thought, well, I should bring that to your attention, so.
Thanks, Larry.
You're welcome.
Even if you did a bad one. All right. Anything, any other citizen comments? Were you all done, or was that...
Yeah, that's all I have, yeah, that's all I have.
I have no communications, anybody else have any communications I wish to share with the commission? We're gonna have to finish this, Foster, our last bit. Is that the old packet that we have here with the...
You get a copy of this? It's probably back there, I did all this, so. I'll forget, yeah, this is... So, is there anything that's jumping out at you, Jamie, as far as it comes? No. Foster's, as of today, is, all of the issues are satisfied. I had a conversation with Dave earlier this afternoon, just to confirm that his attorney was going to be responsible to record the document, the deed, and to get a copy of it back to the city. But after that, the county land file department established, they're responsible for establishing the personal identification numbers. And with a lot of back and forth, we found they got it done. And those numbers were completed at the beginning of the week, and they're being processed. They're probably processed by now. He told me they'd be done by the end of the week, so I sent these sheets out to Mr. Foster, and I've also done it for NHP and the Dollar General store, both of those splits are completed. The personal numbers are all done.
David.
We have an open date for that gas station?
I've talked to Tom and Dave, and their concerns, they're having a little bit of difficulty in terms of feeling comfortable that they have the number of employees that they want to open. And then, their next concern is that if they open in December, and they may have a soft opening in the first couple of weeks of December, but their concerns were that, that it's coming into such a slow period in the market, then they go through Christmas, that it wouldn't be a good time to open. So, they were debating whether or not they were gonna do a soft opening in December, or if they were gonna wait until the, after the holiday, after Christmas, so. That with the employee concerns and...
Turnover problem at the Richmond store too, I know that's been causing some...
The other big delay that they've had over the past couple of weeks is they, is getting the software and hardware linked up for the cash register system and the pumps. They're trying to make sure that that's all working, they haven't, they're working through that right now, but... All right, I guess the next thing is yours, Dave, you wanna go over the punch list, the splits and... Yeah.
Pardon me, that has to go to council now, this last split, you gotta approve it and send it to council.
That's, that's, okay, let's introduce that with this punch list. So, we can, we can kind of point out through this example exactly what's wrong with this example. The split and combination should be done before their building permits ever even issued. So, we're completely flip-flopped on how this process should be done to insulate the city, to insulate the taxpayers, and to make sure that things are done before building permits are, that's part of the...
So, the building not there and then something goes wrong, you can fix it, and now you're stuck with it.
Yeah, because we've got the improvements over and across city property that the deed was actually signed this week. Which is okay, but we really want to kind of reverse it and just put the cart after the horse, not before it. Yeah, you don't really want to have somebody do a construction on your property. Yes, because there's a liability issue that comes along with it, but I'm not complaining, we're working through that, we'll get it, we'll get it figured out. So, what we're gonna, what I, what I'm suggesting is that we start out by having an application process that very clearly tells them what we expect from them. That we want the application to be filled out, if necessary, we'll have, we'll ask for the proof of ownership. They'll be coming into that with kind of work and all the, anyway, so that's not gonna be too difficult. And in most cases, it's not gonna make a difference, we know who we're dealing with, it's a small town. We want surveys with the boundaries and improvements, showing where the improvements, especially in divisions. For dividing property, we want to know that the side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, front yard are all in accordance with our ordinance and with the Land Division Act. So, by having and requiring the surveys to be completed, we'll insulate ourselves. When we do combinations of properties, it's not necessary. If, like, looking over here on Benton, we've got, we started to have a problem in the fall, where we had the duplex, or not duplex, I'm sorry, the bi-level home on Benton. And it sits right, probably two, three feet off of the property line, yet the driveway is on the other lot. The perception is, and the buyer coming into that, is that they have, they have one lot, but they believe they've got the house on one and they've got a vacant one that they can sell off. Well, that's fine, but that's, we're gonna, we're gonna run into that hornet's nest later on when they want to sell off that lot, and they come to realize that they, they have to split that lot to make it, to make it work. Proper side yard. So, side yard, it should have been required to have been combined back when the house was built. Because I'm sure the side yard setback and where the driveway was gonna be, would have required that. In a combination, when we're putting them together, we don't have to worry about that. We're certainly not exacerbating that situation, we're enhancing it. So, when the density is actually going down because of a combination, I have, and I'm dealing with platted lots, I don't need to have them go out and pay for a survey. And I hope you wouldn't require them to pay for a survey if they're doing a combination, I think that's kind of a... It's overkill, it's unnecessary, there's no reason the taxpayer should have to pay for that. But if, anytime that we're doing a division, we need a, we need a... Now, let me, that's the whole idea of us talking about this. If we've got a guy who's got a lot that's 80 by 400 feet, and he wants to split off the back 120 feet, and it's a platted lot, I don't need a survey for that. I don't, I don't need to have a boundary survey where he's gotta pay $1,500 to have somebody come out and stake it to create a lot back there, maybe it's got access to the other road, and it's all vacant. If it's not gonna create any side yard setbacks, rear yards, as long as it meets the area requirements, and it's a platted lot, it's easy to say lot 43, except the north 150 feet. And lot 43 excluding...
Who determines whether or not that's required, then?
Well, we would look at it to see, does it, does it fit the other parameters within our zoning ordinance? Does it fit that? Do we, is there any reason to believe that we're gonna create an encroachment or a problem? Again, I'm trying to think of it from a simplistic way. We can use the county GIS to give you aerial photo with the line overlay. It's a pretty good system, they've done a really good job at Macomb County with that. And I'm suggesting that if we can show a simple split like that, and we're dealing with parts of lots, I'm not talking about meets and bums descriptions that follow a very specific bearing and distance, those need surveys. But if we're gonna talk about the north half of lots, or splitting one lot down the middle and putting it with the two adjacent lots to give them better, bigger side yards, we're not, we're not creating a problem, we're enhancing those lots. And I don't, I don't think in those cases, we would want to require that they do a survey. I'm just looking at making it simpler, I think government makes things too difficult sometimes. Completely flies in the face of what Mark was thinking about about 10 minutes ago. Notification of divisions or combinations to mortgage companies. We need a release of lien. They need to be able to prove that they've got a release of lien if there's a mortgage on the property. The question, and the reason I'm bringing it up here, is to say, do we want to require that as a part of this process? The reverse of that is when we combine properties, if I combine a part of a platted lot to an existing parcel that has a mortgage on it, to create one tax description, but the mortgage is only on the house, and they lose it to the bank, which 10 years ago, we never heard of, but in the last five to seven years, we've seen so much of it, it would move your head spin. Then the lien and the covenant deed is only for the house.
Does that fall on title insurance and title insurance companies?
Well, there's a, that's a, that's a whole different nightmare. Because what, the bank sells it as a covenant deed.
Well, no, just because years and years ago, I bought a parcel of land described as 10 acres, and here's the front edge, and then, it's one of those where the survey was done, here's a stake, here's a stake, and the property owner next to me is like, uh, no, the property line is here at this fence.
Right.
And what it boiled down to, after going through the title insurance companies and meeting with, I don't know how many people, writing letters, it was the property description and a misnomer. And whereas the property line is not here, it's here. So, then the problem ensued that, okay, do I have 10 acres or not? So, I moved this way, so everything has to move this way. So, the guy next to me, he's losing it because of one mistake when they were typing this thing out.
Well, that's what we, that's essentially...
And now I'll fall into the title insurance company's lap.
Well, that's what, that's what's happened with Jerry Hannan's property. And that's exactly where we are right now, and neither title company is stepping up to the plate and saying, yes, they're responsible for it. And my investigation into that, which is, it hasn't gone anywhere. My investigation into that, and talking to my contact receiver title, is in title work. Now, this might sound kind of silly, there is actually a box that the buyer may or may not have checked off, which requires or doesn't require a state survey or a mortgage survey on the property. And if they don't check that box, they have no standing to go back against the title company. And it's, so, it's a tough one, there's no answer on this. It appears that the case with Mr. Hannan's property and the couple that bought the house adjacent to theirs, it was a whole thing, a 1960s circuit court case that described that there was a problem with the plat, answered it that, okay, the common boundaries, as you perceived them, that's what you buy, not what's in the plat, but it never addressed the issue that lot 28 doesn't really exist in the measurements. So, it gets very complicated and it can be very... So it, it, it gets very complicated and it can be very costly. I thought we had a, a better chance with this because Hannan, in that case, owned four of those lots, and that it would be a lot easier to, to reconcile that. But they haven't called me back, and I'm, it's, it's not our responsibility, but it's still a mess. And when you get into these older platted subjects, it becomes a real issue. My, my point with this was where we know we have a, a platted lot, when we're dealing with, with something that is legally defined at the state, online, at the county, recorded in the register of deeds, if we're, if we, we know we're not creating a problem to create a division, I don't see a reason to, to require a survey if we're talking about parts of lots. When we talk about combinations, when people are combining a property and they own their existing house and they're adding adjacent property, if they've got a mortgage, the piece that they're adding gets added into the tax description, but mortgage companies are not gonna wanna open up that mortgage again to change the legal description, even if it's to their advantage because they've got more property to lean against. They, they don't do it. Mark, have you heard of anything like that, where mortgage companies will get involved or will redefine the mortgage to include...
There's a few things that you touched on that I questioned, but when you say those surveys are necessary on a platted lot, who can tell the two people, let's say John's over here and Joe's over here, and John buys this platted lot, and he says, you know, it's a foot over here, and Joe says, well, no, I have a foot over there.
Well, what it, what it gets down to that, that question of where their boundary actually lies, that's a civil issue. I mean, I can tell you that we've got platted lots without fences and areas all over the city, and the city's not going to be the...
But I'm talking about when you're splitting a lot off from a parcel, you're talking about taking one lot off, off another parcel.
I'm saying taking a, a defined area, like a hundred feet, the north hundred feet of lot forty-three. And then the description would be the north lot, the north one hundred feet of lot forty-three, and lot forty-three excluding the north one hundred feet.
Boundary disputes.
Boundary disputes are still gonna be there. That, when, when somebody goes to build on that, that north hundred feet, then they're gonna have to do a survey. That's, that should be a requirement as a part of the plot plan in the development of the property. But for the purpose of dividing it, um, I, I'm, I'm, that's why I'm having this question. If you think surveys are, are the way to go, then, then let's, let's put that into our punch list, and I'll make sure that that's...
See, I just sold the house over, the boardman wrote closing on Monday, Judy's house.
Okay.
You know, the person buying it, um, is wanting a survey. It is what it is. You get the legal description. This house has been here a hundred years. Judy's has been there a hundred years. The next one's been there a hundred years. In their title work, though, one of the things the mortgage company was requesting was a state survey. We got around to saying this, it is, because it's, it is what it is. But you're gonna, when you start taking a lot off of, like you're saying, like over, say you got the corner where that, first you were talking about that, um, buy level.
Yeah.
It's on two lots. The driveway's on one lot, right?
Yeah.
And the house is on the other.
Yeah, pretty much.
And he wants to take the driveway and then sell, he would definitely need a survey.
Yes, and I, and I, I suggested actually on that one, I kinda stuck my head out on that one in, in terms of favoring the city by telling them that they needed to combine it. And, and that was to get the ball rolling. I said, I told them why. I said, you're going to go through the appraisal process. You can list it. You've got a buyer. They wanna go to the table. They're gonna, when that appraiser comes to that property, he's gonna look at the aerial photo, he's gonna look online, and he's gonna say, ooh, do I have a problem here? And then he called me, and I talked to him several times.
Exactly.
And my, my point with him was, yes, it does appear as that there's an encroachment. They should be combined. Well, then the lady selling the house came back and the neighbor to the north, I should say to the west, was interested in buying half of that lot. And they wanted to combine half of that. Now, there's a perfect example. I've got a vacant lot, and they wanna split it right down the middle and sell half of that lot to the adjacent...
Combine it to here, combine it to there.
And then combine it, and that would've actually been the best use of the property. It would've maximized the profit to the seller. It would not have really influenced the value of the buy level. It still has lots of elbow room compared to a lot of the other houses. But it ended up, that dialogue went back and forth, and it sounded like it was gonna kill the deal. And then the buyer wanted, this buyer wanted to back out. So the seller then decided, we don't wanna sell it.
Well, confusion. And again, anytime you have confusion, in a large purchase, people are gonna get nervous.
I agree. But we, we, we've gotta undo some of the problems that we have in terms of the way the, the properties have been combined or not combined, and, and that's what this is about. It's just, uh, when they come in, they're going out there...
Get us a defined punch list where we can go down and say, one, two, three, four, five, this is how we go.
That's why...
If you're splitting a property, you need a survey.
Mark, do you wanna, do you think a survey is...
If you're splitting a property, you need a survey.
Okay. That, that, that's exactly why we're here. That's, I, I, I have an immense amount of respect for your expertise in this, 'cause you've been, bottom line, you're the, you're the person that's pushing these over the...
You know, the thing I can understand, why is it so expensive to do a survey in town?
Well, you've got...
I mean, I did a thousand foot, five acre...
He just, he just pointed it out. He just pointed...
It was seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, seven hundred. You could be easily twelve hundred, because you're dealing with, you're dealing with...
Some kinds of people argue about inches.
Yeah, and you've got platted lots where the plat was, was developed here in nineteen thirties. Some of it even before that. And those platted lots were drawn out on paper, and then the way people actually occupied that space, they moved over a little here, a little bit there, and everybody shifted down, just like you were saying. And until you get surveyed, now you, you, you've got the deed, you've got the plat, which represents the gospel. It is what's out there. So we, we draw it in a mapping system called the G I S. The county does it, and we look at it, and we do an aerial photo overlay, and we see everything's a little bit crooked. But it works. We make it work. When you do a survey, the survey comes back and it proves that it's different altogether.
Yeah, it's defined.
But the sur, the surveyor is, 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 uh, in their own right, uh, pretty incredible. Because they, they have to take what the realtor knows and, and what the mortgage companies are pushing, and the legal descriptions, and they find a way to reconcile it, to make it work. A state survey's a pretty tall order when you put it over a, a nineteen thirty plat, because you're right, you're gonna have boundaries that are gonna be all over the place.
So you're talking about taking a, a lot, splitting it in half and giving half to this guy and half to that guy?
Yeah.
That's gotta be surveyed.
Okay.
That to, to me, because you change the legal descriptions, you're taking away from this one, you're giving to that one?
But if I've got a vacant lot, I've got a house that sits in the middle of one, and a house that sits in the middle of the other one, and the, the in-between lot, I got lot one, two, and three. Two is vacant. And now I, the, the, the two owners wanna buy that lot together. They're gonna pay probably more than it's worth, but they want it, and they wanna make sure that that lot is never gonna be built on. So I've got lot one, and I've got the east half of lot two, and I've got lot three, and I've got the west half of lot two, and those are the legal descriptions. If they were sixty-foot lots, now I've got two ninety-foot lots.
So if you're writing off the legal description off of the original plat, and then you turn around and you modify that plat, if there was a point, wow, where somebody was to sell, then I would think that's when you're gonna be more opposed to have a survey.
What about this? What about...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're, we're getting into a discussion here that's really, really, really outside the bounds of where we need to be right now, okay? If, if you wanna go over the punch list here and say, these are the things you think we need to check, let's go over the punch list, item by item, but not get into depth in them here. We could spend an hour on each one of these items and be here till midnight.
Okay.
First of all, I guess my question is, who is this for? Is this for you or for us? And if it's for you, I would suggest make a form up that you think satisfies your needs and let us look at it.
Okay. I, it is, it's for, it's for both.
And then based on those items, and then we can look at it individually and see how it's gonna pertain to the things we need to do. If it's something that's gonna be for us, then we need to put a form together based on your recommendation, say, here's what we think it should be based on that.
Well, as far as the survey goes, maybe we just wanted to say that, you know, in many, in, you know, whatever you're doing, whether it's a split, combination, whatever, uh, a survey, uh, may be required, and then...
Do you want me to, do, do we want that in the, in the process very simply, just to come to the planning commission, and the planning commission can, can opt at that point in time what they, what they desire, if they feel concerned that there's a problem? Would that be...
Can I, you do, Jack, something, I, I think, I think what the planning commission needs, what is actually required, and, and, uh, some of these, I don't, I, some of these have gotta be defined a little bit better, but...
Yeah.
You know, but I, I don't, I don't think they have to get really involved with, and like Bob says, I think, I think you just want, this is what you require the planning commission to do.
Fifty things we need to do for a split, here's the ten things we do, need to do for a combination period.
And they have, they have these bullets, and they say, okay, when something comes, they can just...
All the details and stuff, that's really not where we need to get in.
No.
And the idea here was...
We just wanna make sure we get things done and in the proper order.
And a proper, what you want.
In the proper order.
Just like it says, preliminary draft. So this was basically the things that Jamie thought were important.
I can see that.
And, you know, so we're just kinda knocking it around right now, right, Jamie?
Yeah. That, that was, I, I, it was to have a discussion.
Yeah. My, my other point is that if there is business we need to do, maybe we could take care of the business and sit around for an hour, talk about this afterwards.
Well, that's, that's fine. Yeah, my, my intent was that this was a discussion point.
I think a lot of this other stuff is gonna go pretty quickly, but obviously the survey question is, I mean, to me, like, like you said, I mean, some cases are gonna be pretty cut and dried. Houses, two houses have been there for a hundred years, uh, you know, sure there's maybe the sheds a little close to the property line or whatever it might be, but, you know, I, I mean, a survey's never gonna hurt you, that's for sure, other than the fact that you're asking somebody to, to get a survey.
I just, I, I raise the question only because of the darn cost.
Can, can I, uh, I'm just going down here. I, I, you, you don't mind if I enter? I, okay, but I'm not, tip that there anymore. Uh, applicant must sign a letter of understanding that some are in tax. Isn't that done by the realtor?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, applicant must sign a letter of understanding that some are in taxes. That's not, that shouldn't be the planning commission. That shouldn't be done by the realtor.
No, 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 that's not the point.
Okay.
The point, the point, the point is that the number that, I've created a two thousand and fifteen database as of December thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen. The taxes and the assessments that were based on the property that people went to the border review in March of last year were for two thousand and fifteen, and now this split here, let's say that that was a private parcel, the, the taxes, anything that would be owing on those are between the two parties to, to negotiate in terms of what the proration's gonna be, and we're not gonna prorate them and, and change the, the winter tax bill to match what they've split it to. With, the number we create, we're creating for two thousand and sixteen. We're not doing courtesy splits during the year, because our legal authority to establish a lien against those properties as of December thirty-first was as they originally existed.
But where is the planning commission involved? I don't understand why they, that's...
Well, because, I'll tell you why, and I was maybe a little surprised coming here. This city requires that the planning commission approves splits.
Yeah.
And if you go in most places, if, if, you've got more responsibility than most places do. Most communities don't do it through a planning commission. It's done as an administrative level through the assessor. And they coordinate these activities back through the realtors, back through the planning departments, a- and, and they just do it administratively. The numbers are handled by the county.
Then maybe we should change it.
Well, you're talking about changing the ordinance. I, I'm not even gonna go there. The, the whole point is find out what it is that you guys are, talk about, the talking points here, and get it worked out so that we can just stay the course the way it is now. Let this body continue to be the approval body, and make sure that I'm doing everything I can to supply them with the information they need before it comes through the process.
What we'd like to do is have it set up so that if somebody comes in and they wanna do something, whether it's a split, combination, whatever it might be, we wanna be able to hand them a piece of paper and say, this is what you have to do first. When this is all done, come back to us with all your information, with your G I S paperwork...
And we can look and see that we've got all the information.
When you, when, when they approve it, when you approve what they've turned in to you, it's approved.
Yep.
All the paperwork, I just send it to the county and wait for the new numbers to come through.
Well, that, that's fine. If you're, but I, the way this is written here, I thought they, as a group, had to do all this, but the individual, if the individual who's...
No, this is all for the person who either is buying or splitting the property.
Okay. Then I, then I understand it.
These are, this are the requirements. If you wanna file for a split or a combination, these are the things you have to do first. When you bring all your information to us, then we will consider it.
I thought they were having it...
No, we won't have to chase down. It's one of those, you wanna do a split, here you go. Here's your list. We have it together. Come see us.
Yeah.
We're gonna check it and make sure that you have it.
It's, it's asking the questions that, as a board, because you're changing, and you, you're gonna have people that are tenured that understand it, and you're gonna, they'll leave, and you'll have new people coming on. It's just structured so that you've looked at it as a body and said, okay, going forward, we wanna make sure that these same questions are gonna keep coming back to this commission so that they can make a, and, and from, with that, you'll, you'll have my recommendation as a part of the...
Standify form where, like you said, somebody wants to see the lot split, here you go. Come back when you've got this completed.
We used to have one. We used to have one.
I don't, I don't... We, we have a, we have a, a land division form, which actually is a takeoff of what I did twenty years ago.
Can I just, I know I'm not supposed, supposed to talk, but, but, my, my understanding is that we're, we're trying to determine whether there's a survey or not a survey on lot splits or down, down the middle. Is that...
Not really, not really. We're, we're just discussing all over issues that would be needed to do any combination or lot split. That's all. So it's a whole series of things, not just a survey.
Next to the mayor's house is a perfect example that when I was sitting in the city, you have church, church street and, uh, West, Westminster. And they didn't require any, at that time, they didn't require any surveys of any kind. And the gentleman built his house into the, into the city's lot. And we, and as a city at that time, we ended up having to buy, buy him out because he couldn't get a mortgage for somebody else to buy, buy the prop. I think my, my comment is, I think you, you have to make sure that it's not just a, a maybe, that there should be some kind of a survey when, when the plot is, is designed. Otherwise, you end up, there's several lots in town that, that has occurred or will occur if somebody decides, decides to sell.
Now, you're talking about the actual building of the house though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They couldn't get a mortgage on that because there was a, I think it was not very many feet. I think it could've been three or four, five feet. I remember that, though, that was two chairs.
I just, just wanted to add that because that, that was a big issue at the time.
Well, we're, we're basically just talking about splitting and combining properties is what...
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I see what you're saying. What's partial release of mortgage? I don't even know what that means.
Basically that, um, when somebody wants to split off that vacant part of their property...
Oh, I see. So the mortgage, they can't, or they can't take it back if the mortgage fails or whatever?
And, and I, I put it down as a question. The question is, do we as a city want to require that? Because, you know, mortgages, let's say the mortgage is on a, a sixty by three hundred foot lot. That's what the mortgage is on, lot forty-three again. And they wanna split off that north hundred feet and give it to the guy behind them, and they have a survey and they wanna do it, but you have a mortgage issue that's gonna come back, and even though it's not ours, and even though it's a civil issue, it always drops back in our lap.
And trying to collect taxes or whatever.
Or if you have, or if you have a covenant deed, and that hundred feet is with the property next door, and now there's a lien against it.
So you want the, the bank to say, yes, we're gonna do...
I, I'm asking the question. I, I'm thinking, there's a lot of problems with divisions of property where there's liens on them. So there's a mortgage or a covenant deed or...
The property owner would basically have to go to the mortgage company, if they have a mortgage.
Yeah.
And get a release from the mortgage company saying that we accept that this property owner... owner is going to split off this 100 foot section of the property.
Right.
And we don't have a problem with it, right? That's what we're saying, okay. I, I wasn't sure exactly what that...
But they will have a problem with it. They will have a problem with it.
I mean, the time to do it is like a refinance or something like that, but you're right, they're, they're not going to open up a mortgage, and that may limit what, what people can and can't do with their property, but...
See, the mortgage, whoever has the mortgage owns that property.
Yeah.
Or whoever gives them the mortgage issue.
But you're putting it on this punch list, so we're at least coming out at this point and that...
I, I'm crossing boundaries, I'm raising the issue, just exactly what Mark is picking up on what I'm saying, I, I'm not suggesting that we absolutely do one or the other, but these are issues that we end up having to deal with indirectly.
It's very simple, you can't sell something you don't own.
So do we want, do we want to require a, a release of lien if there's a, exists, if there's a pending mortgage?
They've got to prove that they are sole owner, no lien against, you know.
Okay, so we want to require a, a release of lien for...
Sometimes removing a lien, or two liens or three liens, or sometimes I just had them with five liens on it.
Yeah.
None of the liens, none of the mortgages against the house were discharged.
Okay.
It was a nightmare, they'd all take care of it.
Well, just imagine what I, what I've done with, with, uh...
See, what I'm saying though, is if a person wants to split part of their property out, just because they want to split something, that doesn't mean they can't, because they don't own it.
Yeah.
As long as they got, as long as they owe money on it, they don't own it.
As far as, the bigger issue here is, I'll put together the application with the punch list of things that we'll ask them to bring to the table, and then, then we can look at and fair it through. I, I like Mark's idea, maybe we'll show you, uh, may require a survey, because there may be times when you don't have to, and, and you said case by case basis.
Case by case.
You said that.
There may be.
So, well, if we leave that in the application, it may require it, it, it doesn't mean that necessarily when it comes to planning, it's going to be approved that night. In that, in that decision, you may say, we require it.
Yeah, so like survey of boundaries, yeah, survey of boundaries and improvements if required.
If required, and that'll be as determined by the planning commission. And so we'll have them submit everything that they've got, I'll make sure that it's all together, I'll give you my recommendation with my concerns, and then you're going to have your own concerns relating to the, the ordinance side of it, setbacks and that. You'll reevaluate, I'll try to look at it too, but we'll have another set of eyes, and I'll plan on with all splits and combinations being a part of the process to come to those meetings, so that if there's anything...
Well, that's, I think we concur on that, you know, you've got a pretty good list put together here.
It's, it's, it's raw, it, it's got its problems, but it's...
Right.
It's really good, just to, for questions.
So, whatever, taxes, okay, and such for...
In Richmond, sold some parcels of land on Mary Street, on Seymour. And on the city, on the big plan, the city, they had where Lennon Street was going to go straight through from Mary Street to Seymour, then they decided not to put it through. So they were going to give half the street to this guy and half the street to that guy. The city had it surveyed on first. They didn't just say, okay, we'll just, the city surveyed each, had it surveyed so that there was no doubt who owned what.
Right.
And, yeah, it'd be, that's a good example right there of have a survey.
Well, that's what I said, this is where we turn around and look at the language and say if required by plan, we can look at it case by case and to, you know, okay, this is going to be sticky, let's do a survey.
Well, that's definitely more responsible.
We want to do is just establish, establish a list, and, you know, I think right now you've got a pretty good list put together, um, you know...
Yeah, I threw this together in an afternoon just to get it out.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So we could discuss it, I'll, I'll put together a more comprehensive, progressive list.
And your compliance review, I mean, that's pretty much cut and dry, is it not? I mean, as far as what's required?
Well, it is, but you, you may have somebody that wants to split off the garage, it's, it's a lot unto itself, but it's going to have a secondary building in the absence of a primary structure. A lot of communities don't allow for a secondary building to be put on a vacant lot.
Well, and, and when you turn around and you're looking, it goes to planning, it also may go to the ZVA if somebody wants to put a mother-in-law garage or apartment where their garage is in the back of the house, and they have to meet all the standards for that.
Right.
What's the advantage of the secondary building splitting off just to chop up where the taxes are collected?
No, they, they want to, they, they may want to market it that way and, and sell the property, but, um, like in...
So I'm, I'm offering somebody to buy my piece of property and it comes with a bar, sort of a thing, I see.
Now, and in agriculture, that's a different, that's a different issue altogether, but in a, in a developed, uh, lot, a developed subdivision, um, you don't, you don't necessarily want your neighborhood to be this, the mini storage that this guy comes in and keeps his boat and his friends come to, and you, you want that to be for primary residences, you want it to be a family neighborhood.
Yeah, they have a big fire on Fourth Flod Weekend, it's turning into a campground or something.
So, yeah, those are the kinds of reasons why you, and you may give in those cases a, a temporary approval for 180 days because they told you they were going to do it and they were going to split it and build a house, so they have 180 days to hold building permit or whatever, so. I, whatever you, those are, those are all things that you'll discuss individually and a, and a case by case basis. I guess the point is, we'll just have all the information out there. I'll ask you, what did they buy across the street?
Over here?
What did Foster, what did, what did Foster buy?
They didn't buy anything.
They buy...
We hated them.
Oh, okay, for $10, what did, we sell them for $10?
Two parking spaces, 20 by 20.
Okay, 20 by 20.
No.
What do we sell them? Somebody tell me.
Well, I never saw them.
Because everybody was talking about 20 by 56, but it's really 20 by 76.
It's that deep where it goes back to the fence.
I went back and forth on the legal description between the, the surveyor, between Tom and Dave and attorney.
Basically, we said, we're giving you 20 feet this way.
Four times, back and forth.
That was Dan Weaver.
Before I finally got it, because it was all done on a, on a verbal contract.
It was a spin and a handshake.
Yeah, so that's, I get a little frustrated, so that's the reason, I, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight. I'll come back, I, I wanted to introduce these ideas, and then before we finalize anything, you'll, you'll have a complete list of what's going to come to you and how it's going to, I think it should be open-ended so that it should give this commission the opportunity to entertain what's been submitted, and if it's deficient in certain areas and they want it to go to you anyways, you'll still get to consider it and then make...
Sure, and then over time it may evolve into something a, a little bit different, but I think the advantage of it is that it'll simplify things for us, we will have an idea of what we want to have before, before we start talking about whatever's going to happen, and it'll simplify things for whoever's, you know, for the assessing department, for the city, for the lawyers, for the planning commission, I mean, it can, it's, it's a little work now, but yeah, it, it should, overall, it should make things pretty self-explanatory, and we should have all the information we need, right?
So as you would wheel a deal as the new mayor, just keep us all abreast of what you're doing. Because the last two split problems were the last two properties. The last two split properties before Dollar General and Foster's was the salt dome and the city-owned properties, and both of those are screwed up too, so...
Are they straightened out?
There's a lot of surveys.
Yes, we did, we got...
With encroachments and screw ups, everywhere. You get an old survey, but there's so many people, I mean, do you say pay me now or pay me later? Pay for the survey now or pay the attorney and the surveyor later?
I, I agree with that, that's, given the last, I mean, the education that we all got over the last 10 years, the market and the mortgage companies, and everything was, is, is a much more difficult road if you don't have good information.
All about the numbers.
Five mortgage, yes, huh?
I can't believe that, I can't believe you can...
No releases, that's incredible.
So we have this, uh, not that, the, uh, split combinations for the...
Yes, back to that, right?
That we need to present to the council right there.
You only have to present the first one, not the second.
Right.
Not Dollar General, just the general.
The one for Foster Oil.
Yeah, and all you need is a recommendation, uh, planning...
Those, uh, basically sheets one, two, and three of that original packet.
Right, the others Dollar General, that's...
Mr. Chairman, uh, my, my understanding and this coming back to planning specifically was my question to you, which, what did they buy? Uh, the understanding was that verbally we talked about 56 feet, um, of the, of the, the west 20 feet of the easterly 140 feet of that lot, and even Foster's had it wrong, they were talking about 56 feet, which didn't include the sale of where the dumpster actually sits. So, we, it's coming back to you as being 20 feet by 76 feet, so that, and with an easement that city, because we have the deed drafted this way, the city retains an easement for ingress and egress so that we have the right to drive into the parking lot. And Foster, I, I had talked to Tom and Dave both about this, um, for their protection, having a cross-use agreement and maintenance agreement, which would hold both parties responsible for the maintenance of it, but they elected not to go that way and they'll take full responsibility for their maintenance, so it's a, it's a win-win. They're, if they don't want to get wrapped up in that, then, um...
I think it's better than...
It's interesting.
What's that?
It is interesting.
76.35 feet.
The only, the only thing it could have hurt it was that it would have encumbered the city to maintain that portion that we're selling to them because we still have the right for ingress and egress. So I thought, well, if we don't, if they're not going to require it, I'm not going to push that issue.
Now, are you just adding, did you have the survey done for that?
They did have a survey done, yes.
Then you're sure that it's 76, or 76 feet?
Yeah, we, we used the, the platted lot dimensions, um, and the survey confirmed the platted lot dimensions, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it that it, that it fits that requirement.
See, when I look at, when I think about is, not as long as we're all here and Foster's are there and everybody knows, the agreements, 50 years from now, that'll still be a gas issue, who knows what'll change around here?
Yeah.
But it could be a problem later if it isn't handled properly enough.
Yeah, you're, well, again, as, because I talked to Tom and Dave about this, I said, look at, look at that, that 20-foot strip, it's basically where your, where your, uh, waste management is going to come in and, and basically open the gates, pick up that bucket, and if that, if that gets destroyed, um, that's going to be a problem for you. For the city, it's going to, it, it's going to be a bumpy, rocky road to get in there to get to the parking lot that we still retain. Um, there was, I, what was the basis then, they did the, the fence for us?
Yeah, the trade, the trade-off was they put, they put a new fence up.
Okay, so they put the new fence up.
Which they already have done, yeah.
I think it, as far as the legal description, we're, we're pretty good, we've got the survey work done, and it was, it was done from a surveyor and it was recorded, and we've got the, the deed from the city to Foster, and we retained in that, I, that was the part that I added, we retained the easement to give us access to our parking lot, so that it's encumbered.
Issue in the future, they can't put a fence up around and say, no, you can't drive across here.
Yeah, straight on the, the, I was saying the deed the other day, I think.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we recommend to City Council the lot split combination, uh, from the city of Memphis to Foster Oil.
Support.
I have a motion to support to recommend to the City Council the combination lot split for Foster Oil properties. All in the favor?
Aye.
Repose? Mr. Gary. Thank you, David, for all your work.
Mr. Chairman, did you already formally approve the lot split for, uh, NHP and Dollar General?
Yeah, we've done that previously.
Yeah, it's already been...
Okay, my, my point here, going back to this, you did that without a survey, everything was, so, this whole process will, will fix that.
It'll air that all up in the future.
Dollar General did a survey, didn't you?
They did, yeah, and I spoke about that.
They wouldn't do anything without a survey.
No, no, they, they've been first class, I, I...
Absolutely.
They've been a great, a great part of the Dallas community.
Yeah, I've had two conversations with them this week, that's forced to close in the 20th, they have, they're going to be speaking with the owners.
And I have to say, the development, I, just to give you guys some kudos by allowing the Dollar General to come into that, into that mixed-use district that's been created, um, I, I see that you've got the vacancy of the grocery store being filled, and I, I have to believe in part that that's influenced by the future development. Uh, now the back end of that is still going to be leased out, but I think that once you get Dollar General in there, it'll actually improve that, the leases and the traffic flow and that, that's going to be a good deal. Mark's been talking about that for three, four years that I've known him.
And I like the design, that it's, it's going to feel...
Right, new business, new business.
I have nothing.
Anybody have any new business for this commission? Thomas, Mr. Mayor, I think Thomas, one, one, one.
Thanks, I'm excited, I mean, I think, um, I mean, I gotta say that between what Larry's done, he's done a lot of work, and it's going to make my job much easier. Jamie's obviously working on this punch list, this is going to simplify things for all of us in the future. You know, one of the things when I was working that I always liked to do was, I would rather spend a little extra time now, if it meant when I came back later that it was going to be simplified, so, it's, uh, definitely, I love it, and you know, I, I guess, you know, I basically called Jamie, I think on Thursday and said, Jamie, guess what, I know you want to put together this punch list I need tomorrow, you know, one of those kind of things, and that's how this evolved into what you have right now, um, so...
A little more forward, I think it would be great.
Yes.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
First of all, I want to welcome Eric, congratulations as our new mayor for the city of Memphis, Larry, again, thank you for your years of service as the mayor and we'll look forward to time on the City Council, obviously. Kurt, congratulations on your election to the City Council, um, maybe we'll continue to see you, I have an in with the mayor, maybe you'll be our Dean, so that would be much welcomed if you were in that position, that be able to draw on your experience over the, the years to come some. Other than that, Steve?
Just thank you, Jamie, for your work, appreciate that, I like to be proactive in these matters, and it's, it's good to get a little more structure going here. I close, so that's Kurt, congratulations.
Eric, congratulations.
Looking forward to working with you all in the future.
Eric, yeah?
Yep, same, same for me, and Larry, you can come anytime and do the audience, anytime.
Gracias, Jenny, next time, though.
Gracias.
We'll even put you on the agenda.
Well, it's been a pleasure doing the, the time that I have here in the planning commission, and it's just, uh, I think changing seats, but I don't know how much I'm going to change the seat, but congratulations there. And Jamie, it's really nice to see you putting us together, I mean, past assessors we have had to have, and, uh, been nearly the job that you have, and it's nice to see them coming together.
After looking at all the, the old way it was done, not mentioning it, your way is much more professional and it's, makes more sense. Congratulations, Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, sir.
Kurt, you're a good man for City Council, you're here enough, you like the city enough. Most of all, Mr. Wilson, you've been a blessing to this city.
Thank you, thank you. Try to, I hope I made a difference in that, so...
You certainly have.
And I'm going to say the same thing, what it was in your city, I hope you can continue to...
Yeah, we'll see how long I stay in Congress, I don't care, at my age.
And thank you, Jamie, and congratulations.
My birthday is today in '85.
Yay, happy birthday.
And say that, entertaining, Kurt, you want to do it for the last time?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the planning commission meeting in November 1st, 2015, too.
I have a motion to support adjourn, all in the favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gary, thank you.